Okay, welcome everybody to our town meeting of October 5th, 2021. We'll move forward with the agenda and the approval of the agenda. Everybody's had a chance to look at it, but there's nothing to add. Can I get a motion to move forward on that? Moved by Deputy Mayor Headley, seconded by Councilor Pato. Be resolved that the council of town Nequa approved the regular meeting agenda for October 5th, 2021. All in favor, carry it. And approval of the minutes, everybody's had a chance to review those. If there's no errors or omissions, we can move forward with the motion on that. Moved by Councilor Darrick, seconded by Councilor Parrott. Be resolved that the council of town Nequa approved the minutes of the regular meeting held September 21st, 2021 as circulated. All in favor, carry it. Okay, we're going to move into our presentation. We have Sherilyn Knox here from Cancer Services. So we'll give you the floor, Sherilyn.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Murchen and council for having me here this evening. I'm on a little bit of a municipal tour for the next month and you are my first stop. I'm the executive director from Central Plains Cancer Services. And what I'm doing is with, what's happened to us during COVID is things changed for us when it came to our organization. Some of you may remember in your area that you have people coming door to door to canvass for us or we have events in Nequa, that sort of thing. Well, with COVID, that's all changed for us. So I wanted to come in front of our community leaders, people who have relationships with businesses, with people in the community, and just make sure that you're aware of the critical services that we offer your citizens in the surrounding area. So for those who don't know about us, we are grassroots organization. Our mission is to support cancer patients facing an active diagnosis. We have been serving people in your region since 1998, so quite a while now. We're an organization that receives zero government funding. All of what we do is through our generous donors and fundraising efforts. So as a council, you'd probably be happy to know I'm not here to ask you for money. That's right. This gives you an understanding of our transportation program, which is our, the biggest program that we offer. So last year, we provided our patients with over 240,000 kilometers of transportation services. We were the only transportation program in the province that didn't stop during COVID. We made a very critical decision to keep the program going because we knew if we didn't help people get to their treatments where they needed to go, people may have chosen not to do that. So we implemented safety protocols, et cetera, to get people where they needed to go. We have 10 volunteer drivers in your community and area currently, registered drivers. What they do is they get patients to Winnipeg, to Brandon, even locally to the hospital here. You guys are very fortunate to have a community cancer program here where people can get treatments here, chemo. But people cannot get radiation unless they're going to Winnipeg or Brandon. So we compensate our drivers $0.50 a kilometer for taking people back and forth. And for Nequa, it's a 380-kilometer round trip. Our patients pay $25 per trip. Our board of directors made a decision a long time ago that to us, rural is rural. And so it didn't matter to us whether a person was being transported from Uqerry to Winnipeg or to Portage to Winnipeg, our patients were going to pay $25. We just wanted this to be one thing off the already difficult thing of having a cancer diagnosis that would get them to where they needed to go. You can see a testimonial here about how it just does take stress off people because they have enough of the emotional and financial burdens enough when it comes to a cancer diagnosis. And then living rurally like we all do, to knowing that they need to get to Winnipeg or Brandon, we just want to be able to alleviate that stress. We have a number of other services with Central Plains Cancer. We have a care for kids fighting cancer program where it's a little bit different than our transportation program, but when a family has a child diagnosed with cancer, we automatically sign them up as a driver in the program. And we cover all of their costs for mileage, food, if they're eating where they need to go. Sometimes if they're staying, we cover those costs. We even help people when it comes to interruption of wages, medications, et cetera. We just want the financial part of that to not be something that they have to worry about. Hearts of Hope Program is a referral program. It's a similar idea, except it's for adults, it's for anybody because there's a lot of unknown costs when it comes to fighting cancer and going through a cancer journey. So we're there to help. It could be simply, you know, grocery gift cards, restaurant gift cards, it can be accommodation. It's just anything for what people need. And this is a partnership that we have with Homestead Co-op out of Portage and they provide us with up to $15,000 funding every year for that service. So it's really great in there. Kids Can Home is a program where we help kids who are dealing with cancer in their lives. If you have somebody with cancer, they've lost somebody, we teach them resiliency skills. Head coverings, important one. We give free head coverings to women who have air loss due to a cancer treatment. We provide those head coverings free to the cancer program here. So it's a great partnership with that, too. Our health programs, we have two nurse educators that work for us and currently now they're actually back in most of our schools doing cancer awareness and prevention programs. Not all schools are allowing visitors at this time, but I'm happy to say that they've known us enough that they are in Nequa school this week. So we're excited about that. And they're busy, but the kids really love seeing them. They do smoking cessation and respecting the sun, et cetera. We have an outfit program that runs in Portage that's free to cancer patients and survivors. And we have a number of support groups. Like we are, our partner with, somebody might know Mary Ellen Clark from here and her cancer support program is one of the programs that she does through us. So we're happy to have her as part of our team. So why am I here? I'm here because I know you guys are the leaders of the community and you having this information helps us get the information out. And helping communities is, which you guys, I know strive for, is making sure that you understand all the critical services that are offered to the people of your community. So I'm just here to tell you what we do, the ally ask, is that you help share our story. We're the type of service that sometimes until you need us, you don't know about us. So we want more people to know about us so that nobody slips through the cracks when they sure could be using our services. An example, I'll give you an example of, there was a young girl in your community that passed away from cancer in the last few years and they didn't know about our service until the last few months of that little girl's life. And we could have been there through the whole journey of it. So that just shows me we've got to be out there more, telling people who we are so that we can get the word out and help those families for sure. That is all I have. We are easy to find on Facebook, on the website. We're located in Portage, but if you have questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
Well, that was very informative. Thank you very much. Yeah, I'm sure, is there any questions or comments from the council?
Well, if you don't mind, my wife's a cancer survivor. She used your services 17 years ago and was a game changer for my family. So the work that you do within our community is fantastic. Again, that ride for that radiation when we have four-year-olds at home, life has to continue here. Yeah, Central Plains is definitely an organization that does not get that corrected in our community.
Awesome. And congratulations on 17 years. That's excellent. So thank you. A good point on that, just with radiation is, for those who don't know, never been through it, the radiation treatment typically is less than 15 minutes. It takes longer to undress and dress than it does for your treatment. And so being saying 300 or 190 kilometers, people often say, well, why don't you just stay in Winnipeg for that whole time? But we look at the person and what's best for them. And them being able to drive into Winnipeg for 15 minutes, come back home and be at home with their families in their own bed every night is much better for a person's wellbeing in treatment than having them sit at a hotel or something like that. So that's what I would have of what we do for sure.
So when you said people, some people miss knowing what you do for them, is that like it doesn't get talked about at the hospital, at the doctors' offices, or it just?
It sure does. It should be more. Like I can even say, like in my own community of Portage, it really depends sometimes who they talk to and who that continuum of care is. So that's why we just, we have to make sure enough people know so that when you're talking to your friend, if your friend gets diagnosed, they might not need our service, but at least they know who we are, right? Because we don't, we don't know about people who, we're not the medical side of things, right? So I can't log in and see somebody's medical history appointments. We're not that side. So people don't understand that people have to seek out our services more than that. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we do have our, just so you're not asking for money, but our fall fundraising campaign is starting and you may have seen it last year. It does come in the mail and so you will see that in your mailbox starting next week and it runs to the end of the year. So spread that word. Because this community, for instance, was a fantastic community for us when it came to our door-to-door fundraising. I think the last year we went door to door, we had raised, I think, over $13,000 in that door-to-door. And that really changed with COVID. So we hope people will still remember to give when they get that advance.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So people who have seen this presentation on, you know, on the council report, if they want to become a driver, they just contact you?
Yeah, they sure, they sure, they contact us and we, of course, we have an application process. And we have to do criminal record check, all of that sort of stuff. And our new policy is that all of our drivers have to be double vaccinated fully, so to be a driver for us. Great.
Okay.
Thank you. And I'm leaving you some pens and some cards, so you'll think of us. Are you a former teacher?
Great, my pen for that.
Thank you.
Mr. Popolo, if you can see it, or Mr. Nado.
I can't wait to tell my thanks. Awesome. Thank you, everybody.
Okay, I guess we'll get back to our regular meeting, so we'll get down to it.
You can do this, Sharon.
I know. So who's got council report?
Oh, I'd like to say one thing.
Okay.
Council Parrott. I visited the Davidson Street Dicks last yesterday and I would like to give great compliments to our staff for organizing all the, our doing the Davidson Street Dick. They've got the water in in five days. And the money that we have saved from the cemetery has paid for Davidson Street. And the money that we have saved by doing it in-house will probably do one and a half more streets.
Yeah, I know, it was a big save. Yeah, I was there on Friday, Friday, I think that, and I was, yeah, they've done a great job. I agree. But Thursday, I guess, whatever day I was, I don't care. Okay, anybody else? Council Dray.
September 30th, we had a little review of the county courthouse and we haven't had our annual meeting yet, that is coming next week. But we did do, had an approval of expenditure so we can do roof repair.
Okay.
Starting immediately upon that roof. There's an $18,000 repair that has to occur on that, preserve that building. So that was approved by the county courthouse.
So it'll get done in this year?
Not, and it was why the poll's partially signed this.
Oh, okay.
It's to get immediate.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yeah, sure.
Do you guys have the elevator in schedule somewhere?
Not yet, that's a "yeah."
So we're thinking that the program could go in there, we had an elevator.
Yeah.
That is a point of conversation still along with our rural partners.
Okay.
And we are two holes amongst six. In the facility, but that is a continuing point of conversation.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, thank you, Darren. Anybody else? Okay, we're moving on to our manager of operations, Denise.
Any more questions? As we also prepared to take, we have partially completed Davidson Street. I'm not going to say it's done yet, but about 200 years of heated water main has been installed. We did this through a bi technique, so the old water main is still hooked up, it's still running and then we coincidentally ran it, we made it at the same time. Staff did the flush exam of that, took water samples. So hopefully by next week, we'll have the results and we pass the vulnerability test. And ensure the safety of that way. Once that's confirmed, then we'll tackle independently servicing all the different businesses and switching up to the new water main, new main. And then we'll gradually phase out the old one and replace the sewer. So we'll have to do a mountain of it once more to disconnect that service line. And we have the ground side already done, so we're good near the Legion. Water treatment plant reservoir is scheduled for the floor pour tomorrow. And CN site, same thing, they believe they've been doing some intense base work prep there and the curving machine and crew will be in tomorrow morning and they'll start that process of pouring all the street curves towards CN site. Redly, the thumb pick will be able to complete the current work around the yellowhead due to delays and locates. So we'll have to see how we're going to proceed with that project and work something out. We have to be all hand form close to the machine port. Pavement, speaking with May believe today, it's totally, the paving crew should show up late next week and start the paving process around town. So obviously CN site completed first and then we'll do the residential patching all around the community where we've got utility cuts and other settlement areas. Cemetery work's been ongoing. Staff have been prepping and leveling off in preparation for seating. And we're getting prepped for that fall seating. Same goes for the soccer fields, we'll prep that side out, and we'll see if it'll flow. On the recreation side, tennis courts are coming along nice with the base prep and the park in line is nearly complete. We'll have ongoing work there and likely will not be this year. It's not a recommendation from the court specialist that we leave it settled over the winter and then tackle that as a spring paving project, just to ensure that it's properly settled. Settled, excuse me. We performed some full maintenance of all the buildings, just doing dark cleaning and just service checks and all HVAC furnaces around, it's not been completed. October 18th will be the start of yard waste pickup around the Caden. We pushed it back with the warmer weather, not really having to kill frost and knock stuff down too much yet. It's nice to see the local residents are already homing up to the calm pool sites and keeping it nice and tight. So I appreciate that. That's everything I have about.
So just go back to Davidson for a minute. So we kind of had a talk about this earlier today. You didn't think you were going to be able to finish that street this year, is that correct?
No, not with the delay, waiting for lab results. It will not, it will be surpassed when they believe complete their paving. By the time we finish off, we'll have lab results and then tackling the sewer, real portion of it. So we'll have to be base prep on that and it'll be a gravel stage for the winter. And then we'll schedule that for early paving next year.
And what about, who does that?
We'll complete those patches.
Okay, that'll be asked here.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, anybody else? Okay. Thank you, Denise. We will move on to, we have no correspondence, so we'll move on to finance. Everybody's had a chance to review the August 21 financial statement. If there's no questions, we'll move forward with the resolution. Moved by Councilor Dray, seconded by Councilor Nado. Be resolved that we approve the financial statement for the month ending August 31st, 2021. All in favor, carry it. Okay, now we're going to move into the accounts for September 2021. No, is that the co-op we're moving into? Oh, I'm up on, yeah, September 2020, yeah, okay. Can we move forward with the motion on that, please? Moved by Councilor Costincheck, seconded by Councilor Parrott. Be resolved that we approve the accounts for September 2021 totaling $560,027.88 as reviewed in representing checks 202101540 to 202101732 with excluding 202101603. All in favor, carry it. Now we're moving on. As you're ahead, this is the same talk. So we're going to move forward with that motion to approve the Nequa Blaston Co-op. Moved by Councilor Pato, seconded by Councilor Nado. Be resolved that we approve check number 202101603 for September 2021. Nequa Blaston Co-op totaling $2,732.95. All in favor, carry it. Okay. Holly, we're into supplementary taxes for 2021.
So as you know, last week, you actually passed a fairly lengthy list approving roughly supplementary taxes of $143,000 and then after a few adjustments. There were a few particular accounts that Assessment Branch was still working on, so I'm asking you to approve further adjustments for another total of $117,000.
Okay. Pretty straightforward, we'll move forward with a resolution on that. Moved by, oh, sorry, Councilor Dray, seconded motion. Okay, moved by Councilor Dray, sorry. Seconded by Councilor Costincheck. Be resolved that in accordance with Section 226 of the Minnesota Act, the council of town Nequa approved following supplementary additions and deletions to 2021 tax rule as per information received from the provincial Assessment Branch. All in favor, carry it. Okay, we are into fire trucks. Who's speaking to on that?
Okay.
Okay, Colleen.
So I guess what has occurred is we had a fire truck that went down on us. The repairs to it were going to be roughly around forty-seven thousand dollars. I'm looking at the age of the unit and what it would cost to get it back in service. It was probably a better decision to look at the purchase of a fire truck. So we let the tenders out, both through just regular tending through MARPs and we tried the canoe program through AMM. The results that we got back last Friday, we did not get any bids through the program of AMM, but we did get two that were outside through the MARPs program. So in measuring those particular results, I have a recommendation tonight based on the fact that one chassis received in November and six months following that, the ordering of a fire truck, which is significantly in advance of what the other opportunity would be with the other bear, we're recommending the purchase of a fire truck from Acres for $496,540 plus tax. These are any questions? There is kind of a summary tax to your agenda there. We had our fire chief actually compare the bids and he did a very good job highlighting what the differences made.
It was actually, initially that was one of our fire chief's preferences, that chassis through that.
Yeah, yeah.
And just doing some initial homework. And it's nice that in both cases, our tenders were locally built. I had many of the built options that they're supposed to use by some, we can also support the service locally as well.
I would maybe add to this that currently right now, you have in your reserve $590,000 in the fire reserve. The addition of $65,000 to the budget process this year puts you well over what is required and then because the purchase will be the chassis for this year and the rest of the fire truck next year, a further 65 will be in the council. You are sitting in a very good position to pay the fire truck.
Okay, no more discussion, we'll move forward with the motion. Moved by Deputy Mayor Headley, seconded by Councilor Pato. Be resolved that we accept the tender of Acres Industries, Inc. for the purpose, purchase of a 2022 three-liner fire truck in the amount of $496,540 plus tax. Be further resolved that the associated cost be borne by the fire equipment reserve. All in favor, carry it. Okay, we're into reviewing agreement with our RCMP, Colleen.
So it's going to kind of here. What this is, in 2006 to 16, it was entered into a lease with the RCMP to, perhaps through the Queen. A signed lease for our current building for the RCMP station. The agreement at that time cited three different periods of renewal for five years each. This would be the second renewal we would be accessing to run from the period, right, to... To 20, October of 2026. So we're expiring at the end of October. So it might go up weird because we're building a new building, why would we be signing a lease for five years in the current position of the building? This is kind of an administration procedure through a different department of the RCMP. They're full well aware that we would be signing a new lease once the building was up and running in a different location. But to keep administration in order and make sure there is a lease on that building, that they're exercising the right to the second renewal period. So once the building's up, there will be the necessity to go back to the table and have a different lease in place.
Okay, I think that's pretty straightforward. We move forward with that resolution, moved by Councilor Nado, seconded by Councilor Costincheck. Be resolved that we approve the renewal of occupancy agreement with the Royal Canadian Mount and Police for the office building located on lots 14-16 and 18-20 block 26984, Plan 1878 in the town of Nequa for the term of November 1st, 2021 to October 31st, 2026. All in favor, carry it. Okay, we're into a bylaw first reading, cemetery maintenance.
Just very quickly, the summary is, I guess the big take in there is we have a look at the fees. The fees get set for a certain period of years. That was going to expire when we needed the fees in place. We took a look tweaking, but basically there'll be no price increases in the fees there. Other things we looked at, because it was a fairly new bylaw that was extensively renovated based on the situation. We now have a river size cemetery of the maintenance and regulations up there. And just for everybody's awareness, you know, since the retirement of Jack, who's been significant for forty-seven years over the cemetery and setting in place for us a process by which, you know, we've all appreciated he's done for us. I'm beginning to start to understand what goes on in the cemetery, starting to look at our efficiencies we need to find out there and what makes more sense. Let's think smarter, let's not try and increase other, let's try and reduce the labor component up there and make ourselves more self-sufficient and sustainable. So one of the things we looked at was having the installation of foundations. The town has always done that and we had to categorize our bylaw to allow for various sizes to be installed. It was getting to the point where, you know, we easily could have been pouring 24 different sizes up there for foundations. And we took a look at that and in our research, we followed basically the only community, or one of, the only communities that actually still poured the foundations internally. So in discussions with the locals around here, they also wondered why we continued to do that. And speaking with them, this is the best part of their job, they could do that. So we're changing the process whereby the foundations will be poured by the more dealers. There's forums in process that Jody has worked on so that the information can be shared back and forth. And they understand that there'll only be a three-inch lip, no greater than poured around any particular monument. So we're going to take that part of the control out of here. It'll take a big headache off of our place, our plate, and I think it will actually improve the services we're giving to the public. And it will make a lot more sense than what we've been probably doing. We've been doing, I think, way more than we probably needed to, I guess is the bottom line. We also formalized a process for interim work class. We talked about no inset markers being permitted because it was also complicating our ability to effectively manage the cemetery and make sure the grass was trimmed. And just some housekeeping, my remembering in there is what we will never change.
Any questions, any comments? No, I think it's a great idea getting the foreign foundations back to private enterprise. I think that's a move in the right direction. Okay, if we're comfortable with that, we'll move forward with the first reading. The bylaw, moved by Councilor Parrott, seconded by Councilor Dray. Be resolved that bylaw number 3208-21, being the bylaw in town Nequa, to provide for the regulation, maintenance, care and operation... to provide for the regulation of maintenance, care, and operation of Niqwa Riverside Cemetery be now read for a first time. All favor? Okay. And we are into one more bylaw, Colleen, amend zoning.
So this particular bylaw, three two oh seven dash twenty-one, is to amend zoning by law three one eight four dash eighteen. Basically, what you have in front of you is an amendment that speaks to, what you're all aware of is the Hawken property. This would be west of the Public Works Building, and it looks like a small field right now. As you all know, that property's been purchased and has gone through a development plan amendment to take the amendment from industrial light zone to a residential modular mobile home zone. We passed a resolution at previous meeting to have the community and regional planning of the brand create our bylaw for this. They've done so. I'm asking you to give first reading tonight to make that change from industrial light to residential mobile modular home zone. This is just one step in the process, though. As this proceeds, it will go over circulation. It has to have a public hearing as well before it goes to third reading, and approvals required out of problems. So tonight is just first reading to get that into the process. And then as the forty-day time passes, within that forty days, we'll get the public hearing all organized and seek public input as well.
Okay, and there's no questions or comments on that. We will move forward with that. First reading. Move by, Council Papalo. Second by, Deputy Mayor Hitler. Be resolved that bylaw number three two oh seven dash two one, being a bylaw of the town of Niqwa to amend the zoning of blocks one and two, plan six oh eight one, from ML industrial light zone to our M eight residential mobile modular home zone be now read for a first time. All favor? Okay. Okay, and that's it for our meeting. Does anybody have any other business they'd like to discuss, or we're good to go? Okay, if not, we will move forward with the adjournment. Move by, Council Papalo. Second by, Council Costin. Be resolved that council of town Niqwa do now adjourn this regular meeting at seven thirty P M. All favor? Okay.